You guys ready?
Go.
Sheila, we're ready. Time is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the regular town council meeting of town of Copper Canyon into order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in the state of Texas.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
So I don't think, it's a mystery to anyone that I'm not Ron. I'm a lot shorter, but just so you know, those who are interested, Ron had surgery on his spine and is doing very well. The procedure went well. He came out of it fine. And a lot of the problems that he was encountering as a consequence of that spinal problem are being hopefully remedied. So that's good news. He should be back in the saddle for our next meeting. Tonight's meeting is largely about taxes and tax rates. Do we have any public input?
No one said anything.
No public input? Anybody? Certainly. You have three minutes and... That's okay. Three minutes coming up. Yeah, we'd like to have it taped. People are listening in from outside. So do you state your name, your address?
Yeah, Dave Ryer, 909 Meadow Drive, Copper Canyon.
You bet.
Copper Canyon's got a city tax that is thirty-six percent higher than Double Oak and thirty-seven, I mean, sorry, yeah, thirty-seven percent higher than Bartonville. Is there anything in the works to try to lower our city tax?
We can't, we're, this is not a dialogue. This is a one-way, this is public input. You can say what you want. We can listen to you.
Okay.
But we don't, we don't debate items that are not on the...
But I'm interested to find out why we're thirty-six and thirty-seven percent higher than Double Oak and Bartonville. On just the city tax standpoint. That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else? No other public input? Let me move to staff and administrator reports. Troy, you want to kick off?
Yes, I sure will. Just a few reminders. We have a couple of events coming up. We have our fall cleanup, which is scheduled for October 5th from 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 that morning. So we'll have the shredding truck, the, what they call the yacht truck. So if you have old paint, those, that type of thing, it'll all be in the parking lot on the west side. So that, again, that's coming on October 5th. We have also our trail committee. They have a trail cleanup scheduled for October 19th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And they will meet at the trailhead on 2499, just past North Pilot Knowles Park. So if you're interested in assisting and doing some trail cleanup, they'd love to have you out there on the 19th. And that's all I have.
Is Roger here? Police chief? You, you gonna stand in? You want anything to report?
He was, he was feeling a little under the weather as well today, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, so he had no updates, Steve, based on what we did update last at the beginning of the month.
Okay, so, no worries. We have Tracy Rodriguez. Thank you for coming. SafeBuild, give us an update on our code enforcement process. Thank you very much for that.
Good evening, council. SafeBuild has begun the process for code enforcement here in Copper Canyon. Our approach is complaint-based at this time. And SafeBuild's general policy is to seek voluntary compliance first and not enforce. So at this time, we have begun, you had a look on your face. I saw that.
I was listening.
Oh, okay.
Just speak real good at the final.
I think it is. Okay, so we have begun investigating two cases. I do not have any updates at this time because we have started the outreach to that and until notices go out and et cetera. Next month, we should have a little more formal of an update with number of cases open, number of cases closed. We're just getting started. Are there any questions?
Yeah, last time we met, you were gonna give kind of a report of an analysis of the ordinances we have. And I didn't know if you had done that with some, like, hot-button ordinances, I guess.
Yes, so David came in. David Reyes is your assigned code enforcement officer. We are in the process of reviewing your ordinances for compliance with Texas Administrative Code and giving some recommendations. We should have that completed by the end of next week to present.
Okay, so we haven't driven streets like, I think we talked about, you were gonna do once a week. It's just a complaint-based.
Right now, we're on complaint-based until we review the ordinances and come back with recommendations if there needs to be ordinance changes.
Councilwoman LeRue, David and I have driven the streets, and so he's, he's got a pretty good feel for, you know, what he sees compared to other cities. So we've made a couple rounds around town, and then he's here on Mondays of each week. So he's making current rounds now. But yes, he's, he'll generate the assessment that you're referring to as far as what are some outstanding things that we need to address.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Which ordinances are you, are you analyzing?
Specifically code enforcement-related. So it would be, for example, high grass and weeds, junk motor vehicles, unsafe structures, substandard-type structures. Those items that are related to the property maintenance code and the Texas Administrative Code for Property Maintenance.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Tracy. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. We have the consent agenda here packed. Any comments or changes that need to be made on the consent agenda? If none, I'll take a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous vote, passed. Time being 7:08. I'd like to call a public hearing on the town council on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2024-25. The current tax rate is 27, 7505, and the proposed tax rate is a cent less at 265, 990. Troy, anything that we need to talk about opening this public hearing?
If you have any questions, we have to answer it if you guys want.
Any, yes?
Is this the period where someone in the audience has interaction with the council and we can address that?
Yes, we absolutely can. Right. That's, you read my mind, Paula. That's exactly where we're heading next. So the, the answer to the question is, I can't speak to the details of Bartonville or Double Oak taxes. I can tell you that Bartonville has an immense retail tax base that does an amazing job of handling a lot of city needs. We have none in Copper Canyon. I can also tell you, because I've been the financial officer of the town for about 20 years, which is a long time, that we are incredibly frugal. We have managed this town with razor-thin margins for many years, and some years we thought we were gonna go negative deficit, but we've made it through. We have recently become, I would say, relatively speaking, in a place where we had enough spare cash to start our own police department, which I would have never thought possible even five years ago. We are lowering our tax this year as a consequence of the way the town has managed its finances. And I know it sounds like a small number, but it makes a difference in the context of, you know, your total tax bill. If you look at your tax bill every year, the lion's share of that money that you write your check for is gonna go to the ISD, and we know that. And we don't want the town to be any more than it has to be for the town to function properly. And so what I would say to you is, I can't speak to the nuances of Bartonville's. I don't, I don't, I wasn't involved in their budget process, but I know their tax rates about 1.7 and change. And I think a lot of that's due to just tremendous commercial contribution. Now, we're planning in Copper Canyon to have some commercial potentially along 407. That could cause us to want to drop our rate even further, but we can't do that before we have that realized. So that, that's my answer. It's the best answer that I personally have for you at this time, but I can tell you, and I think everybody would be happy to go over our budget and, and what our funds are used for. If there's any questions at all, we can talk about them.
Can I ask you any questions?
Sure.
This, this, per role, for example.
Right.
Is there that much of a need for that? And what's the cost of that?
Yep, so there, there was a need for it because we didn't think that we were, had the sufficient capability and time to do it otherwise. You want to talk about the specific cost, Troy?
Sure, so we, we get a monthly fee and we've kind of restructured the organization, so SafeBuild does, will do this service for us in a lot of small cities, but then we won't have to pay benefits and those type of overhead costs, so it's a direct savings for us versus if we had a full-time code enforcer, which I don't believe we need, there a year, once, once a week, and just to ensure that the, the town's being maintained properly and making sure the credit's following the codes that are needed, maintain the town.
So what's the savings?
It's a right-sizing.
So my question would be, is the cost that we were paying our full-time staff, less or more than what we will be paying them when you factor the overtime that they manage because I wrote the contract? Also, the hardware that they wanted on exhibit, laptops, software and all that, is it really cheaper? And are they gonna be issuing permits as well as the full-time staff did? Because who, my question is, if somebody has an issue, who are they gonna call? Because I know that I would get calls from somebody that had a problem and outside they'll call, you know, C-Bat or the town secretary. But now, if we only have somebody here once a week, who are they gonna call? Sheila, our town secretary, obviously doesn't have the time. Town admin doesn't have the time. I mean, to me, is it really a savings? Because, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not sure that they will do a great job. I just don't know. I mean, the people of Copper Canyon said, "We do not want that," several years ago. And now, in fact, that one isn't doing it. So to me, I see cost versus benefit, just personally.
I, I, I mean, I can't speculate, but I can tell you, we hope that there's a cost and a service benefit to the change. And, and, you know, I can't speak out of school or out of the context of this hearing, but what I would tell you is that there's a service component to the, to the change, and there's a cost component to the change. I hope, my hope, and I think the, the council's hope, and when the mayor's hope, was that we would see improvements in both. If we are wrong, we will change course. I can tell you that.
Is this for, we come about, how you say, uh, set them, obviously, they have glorification, they do less like, they cover towns around here. So, um, so I was asking, how did we find, did we get a committee, like, we did to hire Troy or to hire Chief Ty?
Right.
How did we hire some of them?
Troy, you want to?
So, yes, so, so anybody who has complaints or issues as it relates to code enforcement, they can contact me, and then we'll reach out to SafeBuild and they will respond based on what the current needs are. Hiring SafeBuild brought a lot of knowledge and a lot of current, like they, like we'd said earlier, they're gonna look at all of our ordinances and ensure that they're up to speed and what we can enforce. And so they, they bring all that to us. As far as, you know, there's other cities around North Texas that utilizes them either on a more frequent basis, based on what their needs are. And I think we felt like, as you mentioned, there's, there's a need here in Copper Canyon with just all the change and the environment, but it's not an overwhelming need. So hiring, bringing them on as a part-time code enforcement is some savings to us. As I mentioned earlier, we're not paying benefits and stipends and retirements and all those things that go with that. And they provide all their laptops and all their equipment that they use, their vehicle, they provide their vehicles. We don't provide any of that to them.
Rudy. Certainly.
It always drives people crazy when they can't hear when somebody's asking questions. First, I just wanted to make a statement about the budget, and I'm really happy to see that more and more citizens are taking an interest in looking at our budget. Having previously sat up there, I used to look at the budget a lot. So I am aware that, by and large, everything that is possible to do on behalf of the citizens with the funds we have is being done. And by and large, I think the council has done, and the mayor's done a great job with the funds that are available. We don't have commercial input, which is a big deal. You can't compare us with a Bartonville. We all go to Kroger. I believe Kroger generates in a neighborhood of $500,000 a year just in tax revenue for the town of Bartonville. So it's not, you know, it's kind of an apple and oranges thing, but we do need to keep close tabs on our budget, and I do encourage the council to always keep an eye on the budget. We all know in the recent past at another institution, what happened when people don't watch the budget, whether it's the $600 that I was after or some other money, you better keep an eye on it. I'm just saying that, that I think that that's part of the oath that you took to support the citizens of the town, and that's a major part of it. Since we're talking about this new company that's come in, Paula is correct. In previous administrations, it was expressed loudly by the citizens that we don't want somebody running around writing tickets for grass. That's not the town we're in. And I think that if, if you guys, and the council is in charge, make no mistake, you guys run this place, you need to make sure that what they do is what the citizens want. We didn't sign up to be an HOA here. You talked about last time, about the family atmosphere that we have here. Well, we'd like to keep that. And there's no faster way to destroy that than to have people that don't live here, that don't have our interest at heart, that don't understand our community, driving around, nitpicking every little issue that's out of compliance. I don't think that's what the citizens want, and I don't think that's what this council wants. So I encourage you guys to keep a very tight hold, and don't pass it to the town administrator. You guys keep on top of that, because you're the ones who are ultimately responsible to the citizens, I believe. So please help us in ensuring that this, this train doesn't get out of control, because it can very easily get out of control if nobody's watching. And what'll end up happening is you're gonna have a larger percentage of our population starting to show up at these meetings angry with you because somebody's running around complaining about the height of their grass. That's not who we are. But thank you for keeping an eye on things, and I do understand the complaints about the budget. For the folks at home, please remember that we, as a community, along with five other communities, also voted in a tax hike for EMS 2. If you'll recall, we voted that in last time. So when your tax bill comes in, try to remember that it's not just the town, which is reducing the tax by one cent per hundred. We do have an increase from EMS, which is to benefit all of us, for the ambulance service and for fire protection. And I think we all overwhelmingly voted for that, so don't forget that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rudy.
Rudy, let me say something.
Go ahead.
Just on this topic of the code enforcement and why we're spending money to have an enforcement agency or a full-time person, regardless of whatever it is, a previous administration years ago adopted many ordinances, probably that thick of things we can and can't do. And whether we hire them or a full-time person, they're still law, and we have to abide by that law, or at least should enforce that. Now, it's great that we have awareness about this now and encourage all citizens to start looking into what these ordinances are and say. I'm hoping they will bring their expertise and what we have and know that we're a rural town and can, you know, look, or look around, and, and we can adjust it as time goes on. We don't have to stick to what we got necessarily, but matter of fact, it's, it's law. We got it there now. So we have to have somebody. But it's a work in progress. It's not something that we're looking to come after anybody overnight, but it's there right now. And so this is kind of the only way to get a, get your head around what's there. So, anyway.
Hey, Chase, is there a filing process involved in this? Like, is there gonna be a, maybe, maybe it's there right now. But to enforce it, there's usually a fine or something that goes along with it, a ramifications. So is that public or has that been posted, or do we not?
Yeah, so, so those fines are posted, are in our ordinances. And what we, and Chase has worked on this with us as well, when we met with SafeBuild, the approach is not to go out there and start writing violations. The approach is to make people aware of a situation. So if you have a vacant house or a vacant lot, and it's owned by a real estate company, for example, and there's grass that's three feet tall and we're getting complaints from the neighbors, then this gives us the ability to go in there and send them a letter is always the first step that we do, is say, hey, you know, we're just letting you know you're in violation. You need to correct this in X number of days. If they choose not to do that, then that's where the enforcement part comes in. So then we, we fall back to our ordinances. We then, we then will write them violations stating what ordinance it's, it's coming from, and then what the potential penalty is if they still refuse to take action on that type of a situation. So the, the intent is not to go out there with a heavy code enforcement and knock on everybody's door and give them citations right off the bat. It's to educate people and make them aware of that having, you know, three feet tall grass that hasn't been maintained, and your neighbors may be complaining, that's what, how, what our approach will be.
So it's not right off the bat. It's never. I mean, at the end of the day, we're not gonna become, and I think, Rudy, your comments were well said. They're very sage in the sense that we're not gonna change the culture of the town with this move. We have had, as many of you know, some pretty bad departures from neighborly code alignment with construction and some buildings and whatnot that really caused some problems and still caused problems for the town. Those will be handled differently as a consequence of this. I think that's gonna be a relief to those people in town who have come here seeking relief from their issues. So I, you know, again, I'm not a futurist, but I can tell you, I think this change is, is a good one. We'll try it and, and we'll see if it works. And if, if it's not working the way we want, we'll make a change. That's what we'll do. But I appreciate everybody's patience in, in, in this, this move. Yes, Jeff?
Just got some fact-checking, while we're talking. Just got some information that I think everybody would like to know. And this is from Denton County Tax Office.
Hey, Jeff, speaking of...
Yeah, this is from the Denton County Tax Office. So Argyle's at 34 cents. Highland Village is at 50 cents, and Flower Mound's at 38 cents. There are three closest neighbors. Okay, so yeah, Bartonville is lower, but the vast majority of towns right around us are significantly higher. And they've got retail bases, and they're still higher.
Yeah, well, yeah, the complexity is different. It's, I think, I think Rudy said it well. It's apples and oranges.
Right.
To, to compare the two. However, it's a good question to ask, and let me tell you something. I pay tax here just like you do. I don't go home and say, "I want to pay more tax." You know, I, I try to go home and figure out ways we can do things better. And better sometimes means pay the same but with different service. Sometimes it means pay less with, you know, less service we don't need. Sometimes it's service we need, like PD, and we'll pay a little more for. We've been really lucky. And I'll tell you, Rudy Castillo and others in the room were part of why we can afford a police department as well as we can and still lower taxes by a cent. I mean, that's, I would have never said, if you had asked me a year ago, you know, as the financial officer of town, "Hey, could you pull off a PD and lower your taxes?" I'd say, "You're smoking something," and it's not legal, probably. So in, in all candor, I will, I will tell you that I'm pretty proud of how the way the, the town has handled our taxes and our finances, but I welcome a challenge because it gives us an opportunity to talk about it. I think we should. So thank you for asking. Any other questions or comments on the public input or public hearing? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing at 7:26 p.m. and reopen the regular council meeting at 7:27. Council, we have action items one through five. The first is to discuss and take action regarding interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County and the town of Copper Canyon relating to the Estates Bridge reconstruction project. As you probably remember, the county committed funds to this project and will also manage it. So we're not doing a thing other than just writing a check to the county. All the complexity and risk, all that's gonna be managed by the county. The cost of the project's $1.2 million total. The town is gonna contribute a quarter million dollars to this, so less than a quarter of the budget. This contribution to the county has been in our budget for the last two years. And one of the amendments we'll make later in the day, or later in the action items, will be to, just to, to make amendments to our budget. But that's one of them. You'll see. It's one of the biggest ones. But, you know, what we want to do tonight is make a motion to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County and Texas, or Denton County, Texas, and the town of Copper Canyon relating to the bridge construction, so we can roll this over to next year and pay this. We believe that the projects want to take effect. You know, the county has told us they think the project's gonna get done in 2025. So we need to make this motion to make funds available in 2025 for that project.
So Mayor Pro Tem, just a couple of things to add to that. So the estimated cost of the project, it's an estimated cost of 1.2. So they're in the process of getting the engineers on board, you know, looking at cost estimates, revisiting those costs to do that bridge, to rework it. This is like, Pro Tem Hill mentioned, this was something that's been on the books for a while, so they've been updating some of those estimates. And so we're excited that the county's ready to move forward, and part of that is doing this interlocal agreement. And then we will be meeting with them on a pretty regular basis to interact with their engineers, how they're gonna do traffic control, you know, all those things associated with a road project of this size. And so those, that information is, is coming, and then they're, like, Pro Tem mentioned, they're looking to start the project sometime in 2025.
Any questions or comments on this?
Yes, the, you said that there is an amendment to the budget. That amendment doesn't cover, that amendment is not for the bridge.
No, the amendment's for the budget.
Correct.
To put it in the right place so it can be used for the bridge in 2025.
So we're, we're zeroing out the line item that the 250 was in for this year and pushing it to 2025.
It's a, it's a trade change.
You're taking it, okay, so we're not, it didn't sneak up on us.
Right.
No.
No.
We're just moving it out of one fund.
This is, this is a fiduciary, yeah, it's a fiduciary.
Makes sense.
Okay. Of course.
Let me talk about the bridge a minute, just a second. Some folks may be new to the town or whatever, but Andy Eads is our county judge for our area. And Andy, in, in past, has really helped the town. You see all these nice concrete roads you ride on? Well, that's due to Andy Eads' effort through the county to help us. We couldn't afford those. We couldn't hardly afford even asphalt, some of it. But when you look back, and I'm only giving you a little detail here, just, just for kind of context... giving you a little detail here, just just for kind of context, is that Andy Eads and former mayor and some of the other council members, I look out for the people had involved in, were very fortunate to have, because the county, these are kind of through fair roads, north and south, and you got Orkin Hill, east and west. So that's really our kind of main arteries. So we carry a lot of the other county traffic through our city, our town. And this bridge is one of the often beaten paths, if you want to call it that, with a cul-de-sac at the end of it. But the county, through Andy Eads' effort and the town, he really looks out for us, I think. I'm maybe speaking just from me watching from the outside.
He does.
But he does look out for our town. So we're very fortunate. We got here, we put up the 200 grand, and they put up 95,000 and take care of all the details in the middle. What a deal that is to get a new bridge for 1.2 million for actually 200 grand. So this is what we're talking about. Tonight, we're moving money from one side to the other side so we can pay for the bridge. That's part of our conversation in a moment, but right now. But this right here is.
Well, it's 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 where I call easy money. Actually, it's been in our budget for two years. We initially started talking about this with the county two years ago. We reserved a quarter of a million dollars to pay them. They didn't get to it. We thought it might happen this year. They didn't get to it. So we need to move that reserve into next year. That's what we're doing. But to speak to the substance of what, you know, you're talking about, yeah, I think it's a great, it's a great deal. I mean, I mean, the alternative would be we'd have to pay for the bridge ourselves. So that 1.2 million dollars would come out of our pockets. The reality is the county pays for a lot of stuff that we benefit from in new construction. Maintenance, we pay for. So they paid, they paved concrete, which was a great solution because it has a 30-year life versus a 20-year life, all of Chin Chapel, and all of Copper Canyon Road, and all of Orkin Hill. Now, when I moved here in 2002, those are all asphalt roads. And Chin Chapel was regularly underwater when we had big rains. It was undrivable. So it was not a great road. The county vastly improved it with massive drainage improvements in its concrete. Now, 25 years from now, we're going to have to maintain that road. And theoretically or technically, the town will have to have funds available to do that, because the maintenance of those roads will fall on the town's shoulders. Just to be clear.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
To approve the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and the Town of Copper Canyon relating to the Estates Bridge Reconstruction Project.
Yes, sir.
As stated, I have a motion by by Councilmember Andrews. Do I have a second?
I'll happily second.
I have a second by Councilmember Lieber. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Action item two. This is the the item that I warned you about with the amendments. You can see in exhibit where we have changed from what we adopted as the budget for this year to what will be the amended budget as a consequence. So basically, we, the beginning of the year, we have a budget process. We say, we think it's going to be this, what we spent on this amount, or we think we're going to get back from these revenues. We have a year. And at the end of fiscal year, we have to true up what we actually did or we experienced. So if we have swings in those numbers, we amend the budget to reflect those swings. And the Estates Bridge Project, for example, is a classic one where we had it in the budget for this year. We didn't spend it, but we need it for next year. So we pull it out so that amended budget line item will become zero. But next year, the budget will become 250. Okay, we have several. There's a lot of them. We can talk about in detail. But Troy, you want to talk about some of the more notable ones? That, I mean, the bridge, and I think that the construction of the building was the big one. We hadn't anticipated. We didn't plan for the building funds in the beginning of the budget year.
That's correct.
But we moved it into the budget during the course of the year to to actually make the payments for construction.
That's correct.
So that's what we're.
So, yeah, so there was there was about $250,000 that was put into the general fund. And then we were going to use some of the CIP fund as well to do the expansion to the campus, to the to this property, which would include the parking lot and the PD building. And so we just did some transfers. So if you look at from the revenue side, if you have the sheet in front of you, you have the 421,009 or 421,525, which came from some leftover funds that we had from a tax note that helped fund that project, as well as we've moved some revenue into the revenue fund at 338,709, which was the grant funds that were that we had from the COVID grant leftover funds to support that. So those were the two big chunks that moved in from other sources, the CIP and grants that were pushed into the revenue numbers. So you'll see that on the first page. Another maybe number to note is our building permits and other permits. We initially budgeted about 275,000. As we, as Vickrey started to build out, Williams Rants came online, all those things came online. You know, a year ago, we did, we were pretty conservative on kind of what that revenue would be. And it ended up that revenue generate or that item generated $360,000 roughly. And so we've made that adjustment. So from a revenue perspective, we did see some downturns in our court revenues, so fines and court fines. We were projecting about 62,000. And then we only had collected as of this year roughly around 22,000. And I think a lot, a large portion of that is because we only had one officer from eight to five that, you know, the county could only provide that just based on staffing issues that they had. And I believe you guys are familiar with that. So that's kind of the revenue side. The expense side, I guess, again, the largest is our engineering services and building inspections. That offsets the additional revenue sources that we had because we've utilized them more. So we generated more revenue, but we also generated more expenses associated with that. So those those are some gaps that we had from the the expense side. We already talked about the building. So on that first page, we had the $250,000 budget. And then it looks like we're going to finish up at about 760 in that particular line item. The, do y'all have any questions? Those are kind of the kind of the bigger transfers that we saw. We talked about the bridge fund as well, and then just moving over, moving that forward.
One of the big ones you didn't talk about was on the receipt side. Our interest in our funds has given us about $112,000 of revenue we wouldn't have seen otherwise.
Right. And that's a combination of all of our interests. So we have our our daily bank that we use is an independent bank. And then, you guys recall, back in January timeframe, we've invested into Techpool and Logic about $3 million. And we went from an average interest rate of about one and a quarter to about five and a quarter. So that generated a lot of additional revenue just from the interest gain from renegotiating the contracts and with independent bank as well. So.
Any questions? I know there's a lot of little changes here. I mean, that's inevitable. We make amendments every year. This is part of the process.
And I think.
We had some bigger ones this year because of some of the major moves that the town has made, PD and the building and everything else. But everything seemed, you know, in Exhibit A.
Right. And as we're as relating to the PD, you know, we were anticipating, you know, we're going through the whole state process and waiting for that to all kick in. And we initially, starting out the year, from a salary staffing perspective, was roughly about 197,000 and some change. But then our contract for Denton County was budgeted at 20,000, thinking we were going to flip the switch on October 1 of 2023. The reality was, we didn't get our chief in place until January. We didn't hire our other two officers until spring. And so we kept the county on a little bit longer. But if you'll look at those two line items, it kind of came out in the wash, it balanced out. So our salaries as a whole went down about to about 115,000. And then our law enforcement went up about just a little over 100. So it kind of balanced, those numbers balanced out.
Okay. Any questions? Can I get a motion for to amend the town's budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024, as adopted by ordinance 23-007?
Make a motion to amend the town's budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024, as adopted by ordinance number 23-007.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lieber. Do I have a second?
A second motion.
Second by Councilmember Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for the detail, Troy. Item three is to discuss, consider, and take action on approval of the ordinance 24-005, adopting the town budget for 2425, including fiscal year operations and maintenance, OEM, budget capital improvement budget, and the crime prevention budget. This is also in your packets. It's relatively straightforward. Any commentary on this, Troy, before we get into discussion?
No, it's pretty straightforward. We've it's been posted at the last two meetings. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Any changes from the last time we were together on this?
As we pointed out, there were two changes that are highlighted in red. One's related to training. This one's associated with the direction of the council wanting some additional training for the boards and council meetings. So for example, the some of our planning and zoning commissioners will be going to a COG training, which is about $250 to attend that in person. And it's a two-day training in January. So we made some adjustments then. And then also, if you guys recall, we had brought on a new legal services. And so that contract was a little bit more than what we anticipated. And along with them assisting us on updating our ordinances. So that was going to, you know, allocate more time for them to do that and more costs associated with that. But those were the only two line items that have changed since the original budget was posted several months ago.
So we went for legal services. I know there's people in the audience in particular who care about this. From a legal services standpoint, we went from 33,000 to 50,000 because of the new firm and helping us with the ordinance changes that we're going to be going through. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and that ordinance change is hopefully going to be a one-year deal, maybe, maybe two. So it should revert back.
It shouldn't stay $50,000 alone. If so, then you probably have other issues. Any comments, questions? Do I have a motion to adopt the town budget for 2024, 25, including the fiscal year operations and maintenance, budget capital improvements budget, and the crime prevention budget?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 24-005, adopting our 2425 budget.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gibson. Do I have a second?
A second motion.
Okay, this is going to be a, by the way, just so you guys know, this will be a roll call vote. So I appreciate the second.
That's right.
We have to go through this one by one. So Councilmember Gibson, you're a yes, I assume, since you made the motion?
Yes.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrews, you're a yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
Aye.
You know.
And Mayor Pro Tem, you need to place the vote as well, according to.
I'm not. I would be remiss if I wasn't. All right, action four. Discuss and take action on approval of ordinance 24-006, adopting the tax rate 2024, 25, ad valorem operations and maintenance property, tax rate of .238684 in the tax year 2024, 25, ad valorem tax debt service tax rate of .027306, which basically adds up to .265990. You know, at the end of the day, just to be clear, as it relates to taxes, those of you who look into the bowels of how taxes are done, we will pay more tax. You will, we will see more tax revenue in the town, not because our tax rate's going up or staying the same, but because the number of homes and the home values are going up. So even though we reduce our tax rate, our net increase in revenue will be attributable to ad valorem taxes, which will be new homes and increases of prices, but mostly new homes. We're seeing a lot of new homes in town, particularly along 407. Any questions on the tax increase or the tax decrease other, sorry, motion? The motion would be to approve ordinance 24-006, authorizing that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .265990, which is effectively a reduction. But that's a, but as effectively, according to the law or the no tax increase, a 3.81% increase in the tax rate. Any questions? None. I know it's hokey. Wish we would have described it this way.
It is the the language in the in the property tax code is misleading. And it's unfortunate that it has to be stated as an increase. What it's saying is the our revenue is increased, not our rate.
That's right. But it has to, but by law.
Yeah.
It has to be so. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve it. But we have to do a roll call on this.
Yes, it's a roll call as well. So the motion, the motion is to authorize the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .265990, which is the effective number, which is effectively a 3.81% increase in the tax rate. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Councilmember Lieber. Roll call, Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrews?
Aye.
Councilmember Lieber?
Aye.
And I vote aye for the record. Passes unanimously. We have lowered our tax rate. Last action item. Discuss, consider, and take action regarding ordinance 24-007, ratifying the vote on the fiscal year 2024, 2025 annual budget, which results in more revenue from ad valorem taxes than the previous year. So the motion I want to hear is an approval of 2024-007 ratified in the vote of fiscal year 2425 annual budget.
Adopt ordinance 2407.
Have a motion from Councilmember Andrews, as stated. Do I have a second? Have a second from Lieber. Councilmember Lieber, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? It's unanimous. Okay. Any future agenda items we need to discuss? I have one. But I'll go last. Wait for anybody else.
The October meeting schedule is the main thing.
You want to share information like that? We have a, we have a federal, we have a holiday, right?
There's a holiday on October 14, so the town will be closed. So our meeting in October will become 10/28.
Not hearing any other comments. I would like to add to our agenda next week, and we'll probably have to do some prep before that, is to, you know, create an update to our employee manual for severance for employees of the town. I think we have a deficiency in guidance and policy around this matter, and I think we should shore it up pretty fast. Other comments?
Would have to be in the employee personnel manual.
Yes.
Yes.
It would be there and everywhere else it needed to be made, because there may be multiple places where we need to have legal policy.
Nonexistent.
Correct. Other items? Other items? Nope.
None.
Fantastic. Okay, then. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Andrews. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lieber. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, folks. Thanks for your patience, everybody.